Board comments from the floor. We certainly want to hear from our students, but I want to give you some time to collaborate on who's going to speak. Because if everyone here spoke for three minutes, that would go beyond the policy. And I'll read to you what it is. Pursuant to Board Policy 1510, up to twenty minutes of this meeting will be designated for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes. If there are a large number of individuals who wish to address the board, they may be limited to the number of repetitive comments being made so that the time limit on public comment is not exceeded, and we can hear from as many of you as possible. Therefore, I would encourage any of you who wish to speak on the same topic to collaborate here to ensure that your comments are heard within these time limits. Additionally, you are welcome to submit letters to the Board and the Superintendent. So why don't we take this time until 6:15 for you to do that? I know some of you have already filled out the cards and given them to the district clerk, and we'll proceed with those unless you folks change their. So we'll start the pledge at 6:15. So you may have this time to talk.
He's got Tassani, huh? Is that a purpose you think?
Did I dig into the closet or what? Years it's been since I wore this.
And it's still in style.
It's back.
It's back. How was your vacation?
It was very good.
Did you get a lot of golfing?
Just once, just once. The weather didn't cooperate for the second time around. You know, for the most part, the days were nice. There was one day that was supposed to golf was windy, rainy, and cold. But then the next day was seventy seven.
I'm sorry, you got out of here.
It was good, it was good. All better?
Yes, I am.
And keep them given.
Eighteen minutes, so that's right. So how about students?
Oh, how are you?
Okay. So I would say proportionally, we should have lots more students. Let students talk because we can mail our letters in, right? I mean, you guys can too, right? So students, if six of you spoke, that's eighteen minutes. And then us adults, I can just mail our stuff, okay? Yeah, so I don't mean to take over, but. So if you could get like six or seven of you to come up with who should speak, but keep in mind that there's middle schoolers here too, okay?
And I, we'll talk later.
She will make sure.
Front row there, her mother.
The time is, time is now 6:15. Thank you. At this time, please stand for the pledge to the flag, which will be led by Will.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Kilcoyne and Mr. Moses are excused to the speechroom. And that will take us to adoption of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda by board members or superintendent?
I have one amendment to the agenda, item 8.14. Asking to remove it from consideration for this board meeting.
Thank you, anyone else? I need a motion that the agenda will be adopted as amended.
So move.
Mr. Boyle, second.
Second.
Mr. Cordier, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. That brings us to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is not an open meeting law right, nor is it a question and answer period. Privilege of the floor is an opportunity this Board of Education provides to interested citizens to state their concerns and our comments on district operations and activities. This is the procedure during our public meeting. When I ask if anyone wishes to speak, you may proceed to the front of the room. A privilege of the floor card must be fully completed and handed to our district clerk Shannon Cross, who's at that table. In addressing your question or comment to the board, we respectfully ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less and not mention the names of individuals or any titles that point to a specific individual. Where appropriate, the board or the administration will follow up with a reply. And I think you've had a few minutes to collaborate on who's going to speak so that we stay within the policy of twenty minutes. So while our first speaker, do you have them in order as they presented them to you? Mrs. Cross?
Hello. Good evening, members of the board, family, friends, and classmates that are here today. My name is Alagon, and I've been a proud member of the Music Honor Organization and Department since I first started chorus in the fourth grade and played my first flute in my flute in the third, in the summer before that same year. Now you can find me in Wind Ensemble, Symphonic Orchestra, Concert Choir, Theater, and a member of the Triumph Music Honor Society. As a student in this community, I've learned many valuable lessons and have formed many bonds and became a better person. Before I discovered that I fully loved this department and loved music, my life was falling apart, and I felt unheard, alone, and utterly hopeless. I was bullied, and I felt like an outcast in a group of friends who weren't for me. I was falling apart, but then I signed up for DESMA and for Vocal, the Musical, and Acapella. I had something to look forward to that let my troubles wash away like a river. I realized that I loved this, and even though I didn't get the score I wanted that seventh grade year, I continued, and I tried again, and I still do every year since. I have learned so many things about so many different things in this department, but the thing I learned the most is community and family. And that for many students, and I know so many kids, who have stories like mine and have discovered that this is a safe place for anybody who needs it, and that no matter what, you are heard and valued in this department. And that taking away an opportunity for a student for this could lead to things of kids feeling unheard, unsafe, and just utterly hopeless, like I once did. And so I ask that we help the students in our department by getting their safety and thinking of the things that they need the most. Thank you, and have a great.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abby Nico Yatrof, and I'm a current senior at Frontier High School. I've been involved in many music classes with my foundation at elementary school and middle school. In high school, I've been a member of Trouble Choir, Concert Choir, and Symphonic Band. I've also taken Music Theory I, AP Music Theory, Music Theory III, and I've also been able to help out in the special education music class. I'm an active member in Triumph Music Honor Society Drama Club, and I'm president of Sabbatic Band and Secretary of Concert Choir. The reason I'm giving you my music background at Frontier is because I am proud of it, it's impressive, and it should be. I'm a product of the Frontier Music Program, and there are many more people like me. You may be wondering, why is a senior up here talking when she won't even be in the high school the next few years? Next year, I'll be a music education major in college to one day become a music teacher. My dream is to return to the Frontier School District or to a district with the same reputation for music. I would hate to see the music department lose a member. My hope is to see it grow. I've had many college interviews, and when they hear that I'm a student from Frontier, they speak very highly of the music program, the students, and the teachers. Frontier's music program has made an incredible name and reputation for itself, and it all starts with the teachers. Not replacing the music teacher who is retiring will only be detrimental. It is important to have a strong music program. It is important to start as early as elementary school. It is necessary to have music teachers work at each school full-time instead of sharing teachers between the buildings. Teachers need to be available throughout the school day to help students. This is not possible if there's a limited window of time. If students have teachers available to them starting in elementary school, it builds a foundation for success. It should be like that in all the Frontier buildings. If I did not have adequate time with my music teachers, I would not be this far into my music journey. Lessons are integral for the music curriculum, and if we do not hire another music teacher, there will be not enough free periods for lessons. My music teachers have helped me prepare for auditions, including all county, all state, as well as college auditions and interviews. I would not be the same musician without all their help, and I would not have been so confident going into my college auditions. Many students take some type of music course throughout their school career. Currently, one-third of Frontier High School's student body takes a music class, which is impressive. Cutting music teacher positions would impact the entirety of the music program, not just one class. If the retiring teacher is not replaced, that can lead to a cut in classes. Retirements and teacher leaves will happen. When these subject matter experts leave without replacements that are equally specialized, it is difficult to maintain such a highly respected music program. Frontier will be left with building a music program from scratch if we do not replace music teachers specific to their specialties at the time of their retirement. I'm asking you to look back at your school years and teacher influences. Think about the programs at your school that helped define you in your future, music or non-music for that matter. Where would you be if those impactful influences and programs were not strong? It is obvious that all of us here today and others who cannot make it really care about the future of the Frontier Music Program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexis Steffel, and I play the violin in the eighth grade orchestra. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to stand before you today and speak about something that has been a source of immense joy and importance to me and my classmates, the orchestra. In a world that is constantly changing and students are less motivated and engaged, it is more important than ever to remember the impact of orchestras. We are the unique generation that started learning our instruments on screens and through Google meets. We would never be where we are now if we didn't have our specialized teacher. Being in the orchestra has given us lifelong friends and a teacher who has always cared for us and allowed us the freedom to be artistically creative. We need a teacher who is skilled specifically in the orchestra area. In high school, we play more advanced songs and need someone who knows what they're doing. This year, we had thirteen total students who were accepted into Junior High All County Orchestra from both the middle and the high school. Me and my friends in the orchestra have auditioned for All County and NISMA every year. This year, we got invited to the South Towns Youth Orchestra. This takes many hours of practice and dedication. Without a teacher who is specifically trained in this area, how would future students be able to accomplish such a challenging performance? This is why we need a real orchestra teacher, not just a teacher who has a musical education. Would you hire a plumber to fix your roof? How much can we learn on a violin from a teacher who only sings a piano or only plays a saxophone? We need someone to continue to push us and teach us well. Our students need a teacher who can continue to unlock their potential and someone who is skilled in those areas. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lily Desmond. Today, I will speak to you about the concern of hiring a new orchestra teacher at the high school. Like many others, I am in our middle school orchestra, and I play the cello. But what is different about me is that I'm also a clarinet player in the band. I've participated in All County Orchestra and Band and been accepted into both. This would not be possible without teachers that specialize in my instruments. From my experience, I know that it is extremely difficult to teach and learn instruments. I've had substitute band teachers direct my orchestra when my conductor wasn't there, and I can assure you that it was a struggle for the teacher to help us with our music. And I observed how my peers were baffled at the band terms the teacher was using. I cannot imagine how problematic it would be to have a band director lead an orchestra year after year in the high school. You may be wondering, why is it such a bad thing? If a teacher goes to school to specialize in music, then they can teach any type of music class, right? This statement seems valid, but I can assure you that it is absolutely not. For example, let's say I needed help with something any musician was capable of, like rhythms. Any music teacher, band, chorus, or orchestra would be able to help me thoroughly with that. But what if I needed help on a specific technique to my instrument, the cello? I can confirm that even a talented band or chorus teacher cannot help me with that. So why do we hesitate? Our school district has a sensational music program because of our highly qualified teachers, and we need to keep it this way. Every single musician in our district puts in hours of work each week making our music program spectacular. Wouldn't you agree that we deserve a music teacher that specializes in our instruments? My parents are spending so much money investing in my instruments and private lessons, not only for me, but for my sister too. All Frontier's student musicians and their parents are doing their part, so I hope you can do yours. Please take this into deep consideration. Thank you for your time.
Hello, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is James Connors. I'm a sophomore at the high school. I've been around music my whole life, mostly due to my father's side business. I've been involved with music in the school system since fourth grade, when I joined orchestra and chorus. I'm currently a part of the Frontier High School's Symphonic Orchestra, Concert Choir, Triumph Music Honor Society, and the Theater Program. I am also treasurer of Concert Choir. Along with my musical experience, I am also advanced in all subjects with high honors throughout my entire school career. I, my goal in providing you with this information is to help you understand the experience I have within the music department here and in music in general, and also academically to validate my reasoning for speaking here with you today. The first thing I would like to inform you of that you may not be aware of is that from 2019 through this school year, every valedictorian at Frontier High School has been a member of one of the music ensembles. Along with this, on average, more than half of the top ten students are involved in the music program, with some being in multiple ensembles. According to a study published by Harvard Health Collegiate, Harvard's health program, sorry. Regular exposure to music can enhance learning, stimulate cognitive function, improve quality of life, and even induce happiness. This is because listening to music activates almost all regions and networks of the brain, keeping many underutilized brain pathways strong. The classes of 2019 through 2025 are good examples of the effect music has on learning. Can it be considered a coincidence that for seven straight years our valedictorians have been involved in music? Can we consider the fact that on average, more than half the members of the top ten have been involved in our music department a coincidence? There's scientific evidence and plenty of studies from plenty of sources to show that music aids in learning, and our top ten are a prime example. Research shows that music can positively affect physical growth and development in children. According to the University of Georgia, listening to music can improve short-term spatial skills like puzzle solving. However, learning to play an instrument has an even longer lasting effect. Studies indicate that children who took piano lessons for only six months enhanced their spatial reasoning skills by up to thirty percent. Additionally, music education can foster coordination and creativity, suggesting that structured music programs, like those at Frontier, could significantly benefit children's development. Four years ago, the music department at the high school had a band teacher retire who was not replaced. This made it harder for lessons to be taught as the workload is put on two band teachers instead of three. As it stands now, if the teacher retiring this year is not replaced, then the music department will be down to three total teachers across chorus, band, and orchestra. This will drastically reduce the time available for music lessons, which are one of the reasons the music program is so successful at Frontier. If we lose lessons, we also begin to lose out on some of these developmental benefits in future students, which could lead to negative outcomes such as a drop in overall test grades since more than one-third of the high school students participate in one of the music programs at Frontier. Having a qualified string teacher is the only solution to this problem as it will allow us to keep consistent lessons without restricting the department in other areas and allow us to continue the enrichment of student minds through music at our school. To bring all this to a conclusion and to accentuate my point to you all one final time, if the retiring teacher is not replaced, our music department will not be able to consistently provide music lessons and will limit the benefit that our music program can have on student minds at the school and limit the capabilities of the ensembles to perform as well as they currently do. Thank you for your time.
Your members of the board. I, Adam Butler, a member of Wind Ensemble, Orchestra Winds, Triumph, AP Music Theory, and the Theater Department, stand before you today to stress the importance of preserving our music department. Our music department is more than just an artistic outlet, it is a home, a place where students can express their emotions through the creation of beautiful music. Music doesn't just teach notes and rhythms. It teaches life lessons that are used in the classroom and in the real world. Throughout my music education, I have gained confidence, courage, and resilience from all of these outstanding teachers. From elementary through high school, I've been met with nothing but kindness from these teachers. In music, each teacher has an important role. At the elementary level, the music teachers teach you basic understanding of music and the role it plays in your ensemble. In the middle school, they work tirelessly to teach you more advanced musical ideas. Then in the high school, they help you to refine the craft with specific teachers specialized in their areas of music. In Frontier High School, this is an extremely delicate ecosystem with one teacher specialized in each of the programs we offer, which are Wind Ensemble, Concert Band, Symphonic Band, Orchestra Winds, All the Choruses, Music Theory I, II, III, IV, and AP Music Theory. Without these specialized teachers, the music department would not function. I will finish off this speech with a quote from Frederick Neisch, "Without music, life would be a mistake." Thank you all for your time and consideration. Good night.
Hello, my name is Samantha Hay, and I'm the valedictorian of the class of 2025.
Could you wait one second? I just want to call everybody's attention. It is 6:32, so you are our final speaker. For those of you who did not speak tonight, you do have the option of sending an email or whatever to the board and to the superintendent. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Hello, my name is Samantha Hay, and I'm the valedictorian of the class of 2025, along with being the president of Music Club, Orchestra, and Triumph Music Honor Society. I play in the Orchestra Jazz Band and in Concert Choir. One benefit of the music department that I feel is extremely important for our district specifically is motivating students to attend the school. Performance and rehearsal-based classes are related not from academic classes in the necessity to be present in order to be successful. What is obviously very important to be in class for academic and music classes alike is generally much easier to make up work missed from academic classes. Because if you miss a day of rehearsal, there is no way to make up that specific rehearsal and the work done there. Especially in the week or two leading up to a concert, being in rehearsals becomes essential for being prepared to perform. This unique aspect of music classes absolutely motivates students to come to school when they might otherwise not. This is further exacerbated by the fact that band, chorus, and orchestra all have groups that rehearse first period, cutting down on late arrivals. I know that personally, I definitely feel senioritis start to sneak up on me, and seeing as I drive myself, feels very easy to sleep in and come in late. But knowing that means I would miss orchestra that day motivates me to come in up to school on time, no matter how much I might not want to. A big part of the reason kids are so motivated to be in rehearsals is the competence of our music teachers and their connections with the students. All of our music teachers are extremely qualified and are leading ensembles that fall under their specialty, making rehearsals very productive. When rehearsals are so productive, it creates time and opportunity for students to connect with both each other and with their teachers. This importance of community to students cannot be overstated as it provides students with immense support, even outside of music-related activities. Currently, there are fifty-five students in our orchestra. However, we are still recovering our numbers after a massive drop during COVID, and the group has been growing every year. We used to have two orchestras, but due to their drop in numbers, we had to consolidate into one orchestra my sophomore year. With the steady increase in numbers, we will hopefully have enough enrollment to one day expand back into two groups. However, this would be very difficult with the downsides to the music department faculty. Without a dedicated teacher to run orchestra rehearsals and lessons, the responsibility would be put upon the other teachers, all of whom only have so many hours in a day. This would greatly increase the stress that the teachers are under and would make them less available to students, therefore decreasing the quality of education and the connection that the students are receiving. If students lose this, they will lose the motivation to be present for rehearsals, and they'll lose an important community within the school. This department is very important to me, and I hope to see it continue to flourish for future classes. I understand that this is a very difficult decision for you all to make. They cannot stand back and watch a community that has been built over the years at our school wither away. Thank you so much for your time.
I want to thank all of you for your presentations and for those of you that are here. We appreciate all you have to say, and we thank you for being here. At this time, if you would like to leave, you certainly can. Or if you want to stay, if you have government or whatever, be here with us. Okay. We'll give you a couple of names.
If you're gonna leave, yeah, we have some government students that need to attend, so if you're gonna stay, you're welcome. If you'd like to leave, this would be the time.
If you'd like to leave, this would be the time.
Natural audio is okay though?
It's all, it's all recorded.
Hey, John. Anybody from government, if they want to come in and grab a few seats?
Do we have any students that are waiting to get in for government observation? Students wishing to get their government hours for observation? Do you come in forward at the time, any students?
Good job, Sam.
So there's no more government?
Good job, Ella. Jimmy, good job. Somebody else, thank you.
There's a couple of seats over here. It's about four, five, six.
Yeah, if you're doing government. A couple back here, too.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone wearing a hat, if you would remove it, please? Thank you. Okay, that will take us to the adoption of the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Ciccarelli, second.
Sir.
Mr. Cordier, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, that will take us to six point one, budget presentation, Dr. Thumann.
You can, I can see around you over there. All right, thank you, guys, um, for having me here for the third or fourth time now, since we're starting to get ready for the budget season here in April and May. Uh, little shout-out to our cheerleading squad. I know that's not the picture from them in Florida, but I know they've had some nice results in the last few weeks, so. Ms. Camiga, I know she's watching at home. She sent me a text complimenting the picture, so give her Ms. Camiga and Ms. Bannister a little shout-out with those girls. So, uh, our agenda for this meeting right now is just reviewing, go over the, um, anticipated appropriations, which is the anticipated, you know, max spending limit for next year for us, as well as our anticipated revenue projections for next year. Uh, we'll talk about proposition one, which is basically those numbers, the draft language and what that looks like, would be, the voters would be seeing to approve the budget, just like they do every year. Um, the couple of small, the couple of specialty areas, capital outlay, security camera upgrades are things that we'll cover. And then the bus, bus and vehicle purchases, which has the draft language was that, which again, that's a pretty normal process every year that we do. Um, so, trying here, there we go. Yeah, it takes me a minute, just focus. Um, the budget appropriations, uh, what we're showing right now, between salaries, benefits, um, our anticipated partnership with Bolsi's for all of our Bolsi's services, um, our continued debt service, which is what we pay annually on our, our bonds, which is all the capital projects we see going on. It's our annual payment towards those, as well as just anticipated money for equipment supplies and any other contractual needs throughout the year. Uh, we're looking at about a hundred and eleven million dollar appropriation budget for next year. Uh, that's been a pretty consistent increase over the last three years. Been about five million a year since I started here in twenty-two, twenty-three. I've showed the last two years on there, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. You can see it as well from a hundred, a hundred and five to a hundred and eleven. It looked pretty consistent in that growth with the cost of everything that fills up with just the cost of doing business. Um, that, that, that's, you know, keeping everything in place and keeping Frontier as wonderful as we currently have it. Uh, our revenue and anticipated outlook right now, uh, we are, and we, are, we show our revenues on the conservative side to match that number, uh, with, with most, with about, almost half of it coming from property tax and the other big part coming from state and federal aid. That state and federal aid line, um, realistically, the federal part of that is very, very small. It's really almost all state aid. There's one little segment of it, which is less than a million dollars. It's federal. That's why I leave it in there to be clarity. But if people are thinking about federal title, that stuff, that's not, and it's not, it's a separate commerce, it's a separate pot of grants, it's different. This is the funding we get from the state and offense to run our day-in, day-out operations in the district. Uh, county sales tax, the miscellaneous lines, which include things like the interest on our, on our checking, our savings accounts, and just on our, on our capital reserve accounts. Uh, and then our front fund balance, which is just basically what we're gonna pull from our current home balance to, to fill any shortfall, to make sure our revenues match what we're gonna be spending next year. Um, right now, anticipated, the tax cap percentage, which I know that's something for us to discuss, or for, or come down to a final number, somewhere between the three point three, three point five range. Uh, if you see on there, this current year, we're at three point nine five, so maybe I'm expecting it to be down a little bit next year with way, our tax revenues and our, um, um, federal state aid numbers are coming in. Uh, so, at some point, we'll have to, um, between now and the, and the, and the April board meeting, I'll come back with a hard number that will be, in a sense, proving to move forward with to, to project for the, um, final budget, but that's where we're at right now, somewhere in that range. Uh, the difference between three point three and three point five millions, about three hundred thousand dollars. So, finding that balance in there, it's not, it's, it's not millions, it is a small number. But for the taxpayers, it's a pretty flat number. Proposition number one, this is the initial draft language for it. This is what we see every year in the budget vote in May. Um, this just basically has the, the, the basic boil-creed language that every district uses, and we just pump in our numbers and our dates. Uh, so that, a little one hundred and eleven nine, one hundred and eleven million nine sixty-nine is the number from my slide two slides ago. That's basically the maximum spending limit we can spend of our state and, and, uh, uh, our appropriate budget. So it's not that, um, we won't have more money in the bank and that, but that's all we're allowed to spend per year. This year, it's a hundred and five nine, and that, next year, we're looking to move up about a little, five million to get to a hundred and eleven. So that, that's what we can spend throughout the year on all of our programs and anything that we need in the district to keep us operating at a high level. Uh, that's the same language I'd be bringing back. If we tweak that number at all, that's what I'd tweak when I come back on the April meeting. That's the, the adopted language that we'd put in the pamphlet that would go out for the voters at the end of April, beginning of May. Uh, capital outlay project, the state allows us to set aside a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is fully adable outside of a capital project to do, um, big, big, uh, big improvements. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars these days doesn't go that far, but, um, oh, significant improvements. For instance, this year's capital outlay project is doing the roof at the middle school on the small gym. So the smaller gymnasium roof is one of the older roofs that got replaced. Uh, next year, we're looking at doing some work at Cloverbank with their marquee out front and with the front entranceway and office and some other work for the, um, Cloverbank, uh, main admin building entryway and, and, and so that with Ms. Camiga. So, uh, this is, this language would also be in the proposition, just saying that we're gonna set aside a hundred thousand dollars. I'm glad you guys are public speaking. We're looking at putting it towards Cloverbank next year and a variety of projects that Ms. Camiga and her team will decide with us, and, and when we do it, we can get aid back on that, which, which is a benefit to the district, so it's really not dollar for dollar. We get, uh, two-thirds of that back. Uh, security camera upgrades, I brought this to you last meeting. There is a piece in state which, which I'm learning as I learn this job, but this was a nice find. Uh, piece in the state funding formula that we can set aside thirty-five thousand dollars a year to fully aid security camera upgrades or renovations. Um, so either additions of new or replacements of old, which we constantly do here. So we actually can get that aided annually. So we just have to basically put it in a board, board meeting, and as we go through with the budget presentation, you guys approve that it's okay for us to use that, and next year, we can apply those purchases towards that to get aid the following year back on those thirty-five thousand dollars of purchase. So again, we can buy, we, we got to raise our cameras by thirty-five thousand, so it's only gonna cost us about forty percent of that, because we get the rest back the following year in, in, in revenue. Proposition next year, with, it's the same one I had the last proposition, the same numbers. We're looking at replacing three of our diesel-powered vehicles. We usually replace them on a seven-to-eight-year cycle, so next year would be, uh, we'd be doing three. We did five this year, which actually ju, our, just got delivered this week. Um, and we have three next year under the docket, and we also are looking to add two more electric-powered vehicles to our buildings and grounds. We've been doing that with our vans and some of our service vehicles, and it's been a nice transition. Uh, low maintenance, and they don't do a lot of mileage on them, school to school, so to be able to charge them and, and save on gas and, and maintenance and oil changes and that's been actually a ni, a nice, nice transition. So we're looking at, to the tune of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, going out for some first buses and a few vehicles for our facilities department. Nobody can read that behind me, because I can't read it either, but it's in public record. That is the draft language for that proposition, which again, looks just like the proposition this year for the bus purchase. It just has the updated information for next year's bus purchase and vehicle purchase. Um, so that has already been reviewed by our outside attorneys and that, so I would suspect that unless we change the proposition, that we'll be coming back to the next meeting just to officially approve, so we can start making, printing it and putting it in our pamphlets. Oh, I thought I had one more. I didn't. That is actually all I have.
Any questions?
Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you. That will take us to our committee reports. Mr. Voto, audit.
Yes, we had an audit meeting last week. Um, committee got together on March eleventh, and we met with the associates from Trononi and Sagara, and they presented to us the, our risk assessment for this year. We really felt as though things went very well at that meeting. Uh, we have a lot of confidence that, um, we're, we're moving smoothly in the right direction. Uh, they did a, kind of a deep dive for us into information technology, accounts payable, and athletics. Uh, with informational technologies, they'd like to see some updates to some policies. Um, we did discuss briefly cyber insurance, but I think we, we came to, uh, an agreement with, uh, the people at Sagara in regard to what our needs are. Uh, we up, they asked us to update our processes for, um, for services to, uh, employees that have left the district. So they'd like to see some of those things, um, have better closure. And, um, going on, accounts payable, again, it was just an update with policies. In athletics, it really came down to inventory. And just having a, um, a system where the AD is going to sign off. The AD is going to keep track of all the keys that go out to the coach, so it, it's a clerical thing. And, uh, you know, I must say, I'm, we're a little more comfortable this year than we were last year, so.
Very good.
Confident things are moving smoothly. We should, Dr. Cassella will be ready to file their report on time.
Thank you. I'd like it on time. Okay, Mr. Cordier, facilities.
Uh, we met just this, uh, past Thursday, March thirteenth. Uh, the first topic we talked about was the stage at the high school. Uh, we're still waiting on the company Syracuse. Um, that's the company that is charged with doing the work. We're waiting for a response on the exact, um, the, the cost and the scope of that project still. It's one of only a couple of companies in the state that does that kind of work, so there's a long waiting list and, or somewhere coming up soon, I would imagine. Um, we also talked about the concession stand. Now that the, uh, weather is broken, the foundation work, uh, is still continuing and moving along at this point. Um, later, uh, this summer, uh, the district is targeting, uh, a design and, uh, moving that forward to the approval stage. The high school painting that's been going on is still going well. Well, do you like the colors up there or anything?
They look good.
Okay, just double-check.
Anytime.
At the middle school, uh, we talked about, um, the need for an outdoor bathroom facility for, uh, some of the events that go on outside from, so, so that parents and taxpayers don't have to go so far inside and try to find a place to use the facilities. Um, the Falcon Center, that was also a topic. Um, the conversion to move it along for our needs is, is coming along well. Day Automation, a company that has just, um, they focus on security and communication systems. Uh, they have just done some work here at this building. They are now assessing that situation over there, and they're gonna be doing work there in that building as well. The capital outlay was the last project. Dr. Thumann touched on that in, in his presentation, so I can leave that at that. And, um, our next meeting will be Wednesday, April ninth. Dr. Sell?
Yes.
We have not approached that subject as of yet.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kilquinn was not with us at finance and budget. Well, he was, kind of, he was on a speakerphone. Uh, but Dr. Thumann, uh, reviewed, uh, what we've spent so far in the capital project, and that we're moving ahead. Um, sounds like a good plan. He gave us a little snapshot of what you just saw with the budget, and, um, here we are. Okay, that will take us to the next page, uh, and I will talk about IDA. I went to the meeting last Wednesday, and we had a, um, presentation from Tom Kucharsky on Invest Buffalo. We also heard that there are a couple of companies interested in, uh, getting facilities within the district, well, within the town, for daycare, and we did some policy review. Our next meeting is April ninth at seven thirty AM at the Blaisdell Village Hall. Safe schools, Mr. Boyle.
Nothing to report.
Student achievement, Mr. Ciccarelli.
We have not met since our last school board meeting two weeks ago, but our next meeting is Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, eight AM here.
Thank you. Student news, Will.
Okay, well, I'm really glad to see everybody here. Start off, some familiar faces and some parents.
I appreciate that.
We missed you last week.
We missed you, Will.
I know, and you'll miss me at the next one, too. I'd like to, before I get into the actual student news, I'd like to say that this board that I've been able to get to know. You could say that. They are, I promise, understanding and kind, and even Mr. Switek. He's listening, so for each and every one of you that's in a seat and talked or didn't talk, everybody here, we appreciate you. Uh, now I'm gonna get into the student report, which there's not a ton, unfortunately, this time, but, uh, I'm gonna get right into it. So, for National Honor Society, I know the last few meetings, I've been kicking this date down the road, down the road. And again, I have to do that. We're experiencing some, uh, advisor struggles. We're getting through them. Uh, but unforeseen circumstances led us to have to, um, alternate our peanut butter and jelly sandwich donation. We aren't going to be making the sandwiches anymore, so we're gonna save a couple of wrists, I guess, with smearing peanut butter. But we are still going to donate, uh, all the peanut butter and jelly. It's a big stack, so we're definitely gonna be helping the community. And I'd like to thank the high school, the middle school, and all the elementaries that helped out with that, because it was a whole district-wide thing. Next, today, I had the privilege of wearing this suit all day as I attended the Model UN conference at UB. So as some of you know, we just got the new club, Model UN at Frontier, and it's another one of those great things, a cherry on top of the wonderful Frontier cake pie, whatever you want to call it. And we learned about, a lot about public speaking and international government and relations, and we did a little networking. I got to meet some nice Orchard Park people. Uh, always wonderful to meet some neighbors. On a similar strand, last week, or maybe two weeks ago, I'm not sure, uh, I attended with the student government officers, a class and student government conference for the entire county at, again, Orchard Park, and we established ourselves as a powerful power, if you will. So at that conference, our entire student government got to learn about what it's like, uh, representing students, what it's like planning spirit days, and what it's also like talking to boards, as I am right now, and the best ways to achieve results. Uh, it was a great time, and I'll guess I'll name-drop. Luke Lippett, student government president at Orchard Park, did a great job setting that up, so, uh, we're really proud of that. And I'd like to mention that Frontier did win the, uh, the competition they had. So out of all the kind of counties in our district, or all, school districts in our county, my bad, uh, we were, we were number one up there, so that's a nice piece. Um, continuing, it's a big month for college decisions. This is like the final stretch. I mean, most people should know where they're going by April first, so I'd like to remind everybody that's a senior or junior committed to college that, uh, you can send in your college information with a picture of yourself to the Frontier seniors Instagram, and you will be featured. Um, so of course, obviously, this is probably the perfect crowd to talk to this to. It is Music in Our Schools Month, and I'd like to congratulate all the all-county musicians that we've produced. It's a great amount. There's some schools that try and try and try for years, and they just never produce the kinds of results that we do here. If I could bring one lanyard for every single time I was in one of those bands, it would fill up this entire desk. And I have no person or institution to thank more for that than Frontier High School, with all of my music teachers starting in fourth grade, right up until now. Every single one of them has been extremely, extremely important in my, my growth. I was the very last saxophone player to make the band in fourth grade, and look at me now. I'm the third not to toot my own horn, and that's pun. And look at me now, I'm the third not to toot my own horn, and that's pun intended. The third best tenor saxophone player in the state. That was not all because of my own hard work. That was because of Ms. Ordolano, who retired and taught me the fundamentals of the saxophone uh, with breath support. But also Mr. Makin, who taught me where to put my fingers, especially on that that computer, awful. And Ms. Soffin, who also retired, who I owe a great debt to. That's not that for music, but I'm gonna keep going. Uh, congratulations to everybody that was in Les Mis. Uh, we got to hear from a couple speakers that had leads in that and I watched it all four days because I was in it. Uh, it was great, so really good job, guys. It was a fantastic performance. Uh, also, good job to all of our uh, language department people. We had a fantastic foreign foreign language week with a lot of great activities. Um, you know, I'm really proud of the direction that, you know, our student clubs and all that are going. Next bullet point is remember to buy a yearbook. There is still time and of course, if you wanna see all your music clubs featured, praying that they all make it this time, they should be in there, so make sure you buy that yearbook. Continuing with music, congratulations to every orchestra student that had their concert last night. I was had the privilege of being there also. I'm really glad to say that we have a full orchestra here, which not a lot of schools get to do. That uh, and a full orchestra is when you take kind of half of a band, you put it with an orchestra, that's a full orchestra. A lot of schools don't get the opportunity to have ensembles like this because they are understaffed or underfunded. And I truly hope that in in the future, where this board decides and where um, where our teachers decide, I really hope that we can continue with that program because uh, it's a great opportunity for students to expand their music. Uh, also, spring sports are starting this week, so uh, you know, we're a music school certainly, without a doubt. But the sports are starting up, so be excited for that, too. I know I'll be suffering out on the track starting tomorrow, so if you wanna watch someone, you know, dying, who knows, it could be freezing, I'll still be sweating if you wanna see that.
Tomorrow.
Uh, the ecology club, another fantastic one at Frontier. They're planning to teach at Big Tree about environment and sea turtles. Two great things often associated with our wonderful planet. Um, so student government, that is myself and the other members, are trying to plan a scholarship for juniors and seniors to apply to. This hasn't officially hit the scholarship website yet, but I guess I'm telling you now. Uh, it's gonna be an oratorical competition, for those of you that don't know, that's a speaking and debate competition. If you can't tell, I love to talk loudly and that's the very nature of this scholarship. So I'll be releasing a list of prompts for people to choose to write a speech on. And then you'll speak it and be judged by a bunch of teachers and win some money, hopefully. Next, A P exams are rolling around the corner. Some of the the timers are down to like fifty days, so uh, for anybody that hasn't yet, now is the time to buy your review books. And if you're a parent, it's probably gonna be on you, 'cause I never told my mom to buy them, but I wish I had 'cause I failed a couple exams and I maybe wouldn't have if I bought the books. But it's time to start reviewing, so that would be good to start doing now. Uh, there's a band concert, again with the music, love it. Uh, someone fact-checked this, March twenty-fifth, I wonder if there's anybody that knows. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That was that was a joke, I knew that some dude, yeah, okay. So I guess to conclude, you know, I got to touch on all my normal stuff here. There's definitely a different vibe to this board meeting than most. Usually I am speaking my speech to the cameras and maybe to myself. Seeing this many people here, like all the way out in the back and everything, out in the hall, wow. Uh, it's very impressive and I think it speaks leaps and bounds for the program we have at Frontier. Last year, last year, I got to talk to the last student representative and I asked him, how many times did, you know, you fill up a room with people wondering about the operations in the district? How many how many kids did you have come and talk? How many people did you have engaged and try to boost up this wonderful district that we already have? And he said, not not many, maybe one, maybe not. I am more than honored to be in this seat with these people and all of you people being able to represent and make sure that this school stays as wonder wonderful as I have always thought it has been. Know that this board is not here to take away your music at all. They love it. I'm sure if any of you know, this man here, he's no music hater himself, as he was a music teacher. But um, I don't get a say in this. These people do. They're gonna make the right decision and it is because you're here. Even if you think you said something and maybe it was gone in the wind, it it wasn't. You being here shows them, the people that make the decisions, what's important to us. And here, that's music. I don't really know what else to say other than like.
Are you sure, Will?
Thank you all. I'm telling you.
Sun's still up, we're good.
He's got a lot of comments, but I swear, he is a nice guy. Man, but nice superintendent, it's it's great.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Just one comment. You spoke more about your section than any other. I'm yours, but you did it very well.
I took Mr. Kilcoin's time, maybe that's.
He is your mentor. Okay, let us continue with eight point one. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following. To abolish a twelve-month, five-hour-a-day grounds work worker position throughout the district and to create a twelve-month, eight-hour-a-day grounds worker that will work throughout the district effective three eighteen twenty-five. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Voto, second.
Second.
Mrs. Hepner, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eight point two. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts the resignation for retirement of Ann Crandall, who is a teacher at Blaisdell. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Chicorelli, second.
Second.
Mr. Cordier, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that will take us to eight point ten. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education appoints the following individuals to a support staff position, salary in accordance with the current district F C E A collective bargaining agreement and salary schedule. Further, unless noted, these recommended appointments have fingerprint clearance from the New York State Education Department and Office of School Review and Accountability. James Bosilieri will be a bus driver in transportation, ten months, seven hours a day. May I have a motion?
So moved.
There's your Mrs. Hepner. And I skipped ahead, I there are a couple other people on here before I go to the second. Patricia Streasing will be a school lunch manager at the middle school. Kelly Hinman, who will be a clerk type is part-time at Pinehurst. We have Mrs. Hepner's motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chicorelli, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. A quartet has been tabled. And that will take us to the business section. Ten point six. Which is our preliminary legal notice. Resolved that the district clerk is hereby directed to pub publish a copy of the annual notice and substantially the form is presented in the attachment with such minor variations as may be approved by district officials working in tandem with the district's legal counsel to effect the wishes of the board in the district's official newspapers on four dates within seven weeks preceding May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. For the first such date to be not more than forty-nine days nor less than forty-five days prior to May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Boyle, second.
Second.
Mr. Cordier, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Superintendent's report, Mr. Switek.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, before we even get started here today, we have some visitors uh, from the administrative program at Buffalo State College. And I would like to welcome Mr. Robert Christman and Mrs. Fran Paskowitz from Buff State. On behalf of Frontier, we welcome the Buff State students and welcome back to Frontier. Mr. Christman, we're happy to see you again. So I just wanted to acknowledge. I wanted to say congratulations to our Frontier cheer team who took grand champion at Universal Studios. They not only won their division, but they were the grand champion of all divisions. I believe there were forty teams that competed. Uh, they said they could barely get the trophy on the airplane on the way home. So uh, congratulations to our cheer team, they're a very well-accomplished uh, group. Both athletically and in the classroom, very nice uh, group. Um, I wanna say Mr. Halmicki and I probably got close to ten to fifteen thank you emails directly uh, from our team and I'm really looking forward to it. Yesterday, I was very pleased, uh, and probably there's many in the crowd here today. I was uh, at the orchestra concert yesterday and it was an outstanding performance by everybody that was there. I I think the part I was most impressed with is the verticality of instruction from sixth grade to twelfth grade. Um, when our littles got up there and the depth of performance and the depth of sound that I saw graduate from grade six uh, all the way to twelfth grade was outstanding, so those that have been here, congratulations. Um, but more partly, I thought it was really cool when you guys invited the eighth graders back up there, too, and then everybody sat on the stage at the same time. Uh, very enjoyable concert and um, thank you for that. At the Falcon Center, everything is going well. Dr. Thumann has been organizing our um, our workforce to get our U Universal U P K program up and running uh, along with moving over Big Picture. And one last thing, um, I wasn't gonna do this, but now that many people have stayed, I would like to address the crowd. As the superintendent of Frontier Schools, I would like to address the concerns and comments that have been heard this evening regarding a music program in the district. In the last two weeks alone, I personally have joined the High School Musical. I've enjoyed Les Les Mis and the orchestra's performance yesterday and I will attend multiple other music events throughout the school year. Witnessing this was an outstanding opportunity for me to hear Pinball Wizard through an orchestra. I've never heard that before, that was very cool, whoever thought of that. Like many districts, Frontier's navigating financial challenges due to rising costs, reduced federal funding and economic uncertainties. In response, the board and I have carefully reviewed all expenditures to ensure we continue providing high-quality education while maintaining fiscal responsibility. These proposed reductions in staff through retirements were not made lightly. Every effort has been made to minimize the impact on students, existing staff and essential programming, not only in music, but across the board in all of our grade levels and departments. However, difficult choices are necessary to balance our budget and sustain long-term financial stability. We value transparency and welcome community input throughout this process and I thank those students who had the courage to step up to the podium. You were listened to. I will share this with you in closing. I sit in front of you as the superintendent and I represent the Board of Education and many of you may not really know. On this board, there's five retired educators, five, okay, from Frontier. Typically, to my left, I sit next to a husband of a teacher in Frontier right now and a thirteen-year veteran of the Board of Education at Frontier. I could share with you, and I'm personally married to a teacher, okay? I could share with you that never in my twenty-eight years doing this, if I had the opportunity to work with a group of people who care about the well-being of programs and kids more than this group does. I wanted to share that with you, that you were well-heard today, okay? Continued conversation will happen, but I also need you to completely understand the perspective of the district as we have to make decisions as well. And I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to eleven point two. Resolved that the Board of Education retires the following policies as they are lo no longer required. Seventy-four sixty, selling merchandise to students. Eighty-two eleven, prevention instruction. Eighty-two fifty, evaluation of the instructional program. Eighty-two ninety, alternative education environments. Eighty-three ten, purpose of instructional materials. Eighty-four eleven, emergency school closings, extraordinary condition days, student attendance. Eighty-four thirty, independent study. These still exist, but in a different form that has been updated, as you'll see as we go along. So may I have a motion for this one?
So moved.
Mr. Boyle, second.
Second.
Mrs. Hepner, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eleven point three. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon a first reading, moves following proposed policies onto a second reading. Thirteen thirty, appointments and designations by the board. Forty-two eleven, line responsibility. Thirty-three eleven, notification of disclosure of employee disciplinary records. Seventy-five thirteen, medication and personal care items. Seventy-five fourteen, student health records. Eighty-one ten, curriculum development, resources and evaluation. And eighty-two ten, safety conditions and programs. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Voto, second.
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eleven point four. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon a second reading, adopts the following policies. Sixty-one twenty, equal employment opportunity. Sixty-two thirteen, probation and tenure. Sixty-five fifty, leaves of absence. Sixty-five fifty-two, military leaves of absence. Sixty-five sixty-three, determination of employment status, employee or independent contractor. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Cordier, second.
Second.
Mr. Boyle. On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. That brings us to roundtable. And I'll begin with you, Mrs. Hepner.
I attended Les Mis last week and it was wonderful. And I also want to say how impressive all of you were when you spoke and you are listened to and you have a very, very reasonable superintendent who understands. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to Jan Chowski, who got coach of the year as the wrestling coach, and congratulations to the cheer team.
Mr. Voto.
Um, definitely congratulations to the whole cast and musicians and crew of Les Mis. It was a very emotional time in my house because it was Mrs. Voto's last show after thirty years of doing shows at Frontier High School. But um, thank you to all of you for making this dream come true for her. Congratulations to the cheer team and to the coaches. You know, I worked with Mrs. Camiga for years, so I still follow things as they go along and we're very proud of their work. And thank you to all the students and parents that came out tonight. I think that we would like to see people more often come in and talk to us. We learn a lot and, you know, uh, and we listen. So you're welcome anytime and congratulations for stepping up to the podium because I'm not sure I could have done it when I was in high school.
Thank you, Mr. Voto. Um, Mr. Chicorelli.
Congratulations to our cheerleaders for their success in Florida. I wanna thank Superintendent Swiatek for going above and beyond to provide us with continuous information and updates regarding staffing and educational programs in general. I look forward to all of us working together to continue to examine programs and staffing as we progress through the budget process. And to take a page out of Will Miggas' "I would like to talk to all of you." Many of you don't know me, I'm the new person on the board. I talked for thirty-seven years in this district. I retired from this district. I came very close to being a music major. My wife and I moved into this district because of the Frontier Schools. My wife and I moved into this district because of the Frontier Schools. My two youngest children, both of them graduated third in their graduating class. Both of them were involved in athletics, and both of them were involved in the music program, and were taught by people, some people sitting in this very room. One of them had a tremendous impact on my twenty-six-year-old. Her name is Mrs. Christina Voto. I guarantee you, you are, you have been heard. I guarantee you, all of your concerns have been discussed. There are a lot of things that go into the decisions we make. I, too, wanna congratulate all of you who were willing to speak, and all of you who had the courage and were selected, won the lottery to speak. Job well done. Thank you.
Mr. Boyle?
I can't follow that. Well said, Mr. Generali. Um, can, all congratulations to all the things that were mentioned earlier. Um, I just wanna chime in on the music a little bit. So, my wife plays piano and sings, my three Frontier kids with trumpet, saxophone, and oboe. I don't ask my wife what an oboe was, she said she'll get to play first if she plays that instrument. But I am, I am a big supporter of music, and, and I, and I've gone to the district for a long time, and I've watched the kids that are in the music program. And I don't think it's a, it's a coincidence that I see those same kids doing really well academically. So, thank you to all the people that spoke tonight. Be assured, the board, we're doing everything we can do to, to do what we can to keep the music program strong at Frontier. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Cordier?
I really can't add anything new or different than what's already been said, but thank you to all the speakers. I know that takes a lot of courage to get up there and say what you have to say, you were listened to. Dr. Thumann, for your exciting presentation, thank you.
Channel four walked out on me.
The high point of the night. Um, also, I did have an opportunity to attend the musical. I guess what amazes me about the whole thing is the amount of depth um, in the performance from, from the person that was a lead, all the way down to probably the person that was just the, the, the average or the last singer, whatever it was. But the depth was amazing to me, is how good every individual student was. And also, just a quick congratulations to the cheer team as well.
Mr. Switek?
I would like to default to the person from uh, this great state of New York. Are you done here well today, or?
Oh, I don't know, how much time do you guys have?
I'm good, everything was said, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I also would like to congratulate the cheerleaders, everyone who participated in Les Mis. Will, your comments were very informative about ecology and uh, the students going over a big tree with the sea turtles. I think that's all wonderful. Uh, the Capitol Project seems to be going well, so I thank Mr. Switek and Dr. Thumann for that. Um, students, it was wonderful that you could be here tonight. Some of you are amazing speakers as high school students, and I would agree, I don't think I could have done that in high school myself. I taught in this district for a, a long time, I'll just say decades. Uh, I moved into the district because I believe in it. Having been the former high school prin- one of the former high school principals, it was probably the best job I ever had because of all the students who were involved. I've always been a great supporter of the music program, the art program, and every other program that this district offers. So, even though I don't have children, I see all of you as my children. So, I thank you for coming tonight, and we did hear what you had to say. So, with that, I would like to get a motion to adjourn. Students, I know some of you are here for government, you can come up as soon as we adjourn, and the superintendent will sign your paper. And uh, if we could take a ten-minute recess and be back here maybe at seven thirty-five for executive session, that would be great. So, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Well, that was a collective, uh, I'll take.
Yeah, you can go right.
Yeah, I did it. Mrs. Hepner and Mr. Voto. You ready?
Help.